Okay, let's call the panel planning commission meeting to order. This is a special meeting on Tuesday, March 26, 2019. It's a special meeting because we rescheduled our regular meeting from a week ago. I just want to go through the agenda quickly and then I'm going to ask everybody to introduce themselves for the benefit of the folks watching at home. Agenda item number one is the approval of this agenda, as it always is. Number two is reorganization, chair and clerk. Number three is approval of the minutes, the regular minutes back in 19. Four, newspaper preferences and legal notices. Five, posting sites. And I'm going through these quickly because I don't think we can do any of those things.
Hey, Megan.
Rules of procedure, we can at least have a discussion of rules of procedure and get ready for our reorg meeting, which unfortunately is coming next. We'll take public comment after all of that. And if you have something to say, Mr. Wilkinson, it won't be long because I think we can get through the first part pretty quickly. We'll go through the mail. We'll talk about new business, just to get an update on our bylaws and the next steps. And then under old business, the energy section amendment update, which I'll give everybody what I know about it. And then the energy coordinator update, and we'll go from there. So having said that, I'd like a motion, if possible, to approve this agenda.
So will.
Mr. Smithers moved. Barbara True-Weber seconded.
I have a comment.
I was going to say, any discussion? Rosemarie?
Should we add to this a update, whatever the requests were for a consultant, where that stands? And is there any steps we can do?
I was going to do that under bylaw update.
Okay, fine. Okay, that's fine.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve. We have a second. Is there any further discussion? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Say nay. Anybody abstaining who, for any reason, wants to abstain? So it's unanimous. Carries. Okay. So before we do this, I want to welcome Jessica Witherall, our new secretary. Most of you met her as you were coming in. What I'd like to do, and I think we should do this before, and Sid gave me this idea, I think, for people watching at home, we should go around the table, starting with you, and let's introduce ourselves before we start. Rosemarie, if you don't mind.
Rosemarie Pelletier.
Jim Winchester.
Michelle Teckrell.
Megan Randall.
Sid Smithers.
Barbara True-Weber.
Fred Miller.
Mike Slattery.
Jessica Witherall.
There we go. So you've got all those names right away? You're okay with that?
You're in front.
I actually have an old roster that I've spilled coffee on and things like that. And one of the things that, what I would like each of you to do, just pass this around and make changes to it. Don't worry about our new town emails. She's got all of those, okay? But just make sure the phone numbers and everything else are right. Home phones, if you have them. You can leave personal emails on there if you want. I mean, it's not necessary. And then I'm going to have Jessica update this and so that we all have that. Probably not until after the next one. We'll have some reappointments and some new appointments after the next meeting. So just check that out and don't spill any more coffee on it. Okay. So before we get into number two, reorganization, I was at the town hall, and I've only been doing this for 14 years, guys, but I was at the town hall yesterday and Michael Walker was asking me what was on the agenda for tonight. And we were out there next to the town clerk, Julie Weber, and I said, well, we're going to reorganize. Julie goes, you can't reorganize. I go, why can't we reorganize? And it was because there were going to be new appointments, you know, which I didn't know. I didn't realize that there were going to be new appointments because I never really paid attention to these things with James Winchester, 2019, your term ended. Barbara True-Weber, 2019, your term ended. Ronnie Bizon, 2019, his term ended, and it also ended via him being an ex-officio member of this board when he lost his position on the select board. My understanding is, though, that he is applying for a position to be on here. So, you know. So we can't reorganize, although I'm tempted to, because I can't find any statute. I can't find anything other than common sense, which says we should wait to reorganize. You know, as it stands, unless they figure out a reason to throw Barbara and Jim Winchester out, we're going to have, you know, 99% the same board. And if Ronnie gets appointed, we've got the same board. I guess we should wait, though. Everybody's looking at me like we should wait.
No.
We don't know the perils that may befall us if we reorganize tonight.
Well, that's the thing.
Put it off.
It's easier to put off today what you can do tomorrow. So numbers two, number four, number five, and number six, I would look for a motion to table those until the regular April meeting. Okay, we can go home now.
Well, there was a move.
No, there was a motion. I think Fred motioned and somebody seconded.
I'll second it.
Michelle seconded.
Then discussion.
Any further discussion?
And I would ask a question.
Yes.
I mean, I can understand putting off the reorganization, the chair and the clerk, because those are personnel-related. I'm not sure I understand why we can't discuss where legal postings are posted.
Yeah, good question.
Or why we can't do posting sites for meeting agendas.
My feeling is it's the same reason we can't reorg, because the new people may have different opinions as to all of those things. Now, you and I both know there is no other place to post.
I was.
You know, so it's just a formality. But, you know, who knows? Maybe there's the observer or something like that.
And I also know the formalities have come back to bite people in the butt.
That's right. That's right. That's what you guys are talking me down right now. That's what we need. So that's what I would say as far as putting that one off.
Okay.
We will post the next meeting, though, since it hasn't changed, at all of those places.
Okay.
Okay? One thing I think we can do tonight, though, is number three, if everybody -- I don't like having a chairman that really knows this stuff, you know, is number three, approval of the minutes of the regular meeting for February 19th, 2019. If you haven't looked at it, which I sent it out to everybody, take a few minutes and check it out. These came to us via Rosemarie Pelletier. You almost didn't have a job because we're trying to get her to do this.
You're safe.
You're safe. Yeah. She flat-out heard us down.
I'll move that the minutes for Tuesday, February 19th, as presented, be approved.
I'll second.
Either or.
Let him, since I wrote it.
We have a second. Any further discussion about these minutes? If none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. So the motion carries unanimously. Yay.
Do I have to say I abstained because I wasn't here?
Yes.
I abstained because I wasn't here.
Technically. Yep.
Really?
And there were five of us who were here. Fred was here. Megan was here. Rosemarie. Because of a board of eight or nine, we need five people to pass a motion. So, okay. So apologies for all the holes in the agenda here. If you want to look at, I also sent out some rules of procedure. If you guys want to look at those, and this was just literally like off-the-top-of-my-head stuff. And if you guys, I have some copies.
I have a copy I printed and I have an extra one.
Yeah. Brian, if you want to have a look.
Sure. Thank you, Ross.
And do you have the current ones as well?
I have the amended one, which has the current plus the changes.
Oh, it does. That's right. Yeah. Okay. So I actually thought about a lot of these a year ago.
And this was on the table.
A year ago. And then we tabled it and we never got back to it. Yeah.
Busy.
So just, you know, I'm open to suggestions here. I don't want to, you know, can't unilaterally change it. But I thought some of these were okay ideas. And I think our rules right now need some work, and they're a little bit, they're a little on the simple side. Maybe it should be. I don't know. But why don't you guys just look through it for a few minutes? And since we're going to have a relatively short meeting anyway. Did you get, you didn't get a copy?
I was going to say, kind of a copy.
Yeah. There's the, so there's the current. And this is just stuff I put together. And what I'm going to ask everybody to do, we can talk about it tonight. You can take it with you, since we can't vote on it until the April meeting. And, you know, then everybody gets a chance to say, yeah, I like that idea. I don't like that one. I'd rather see this, and all that stuff.
Can I correct punctuation? You're kind of light on the commas there. Are you reading me in them?
I was light on the commas?
Oh. Yeah. Okay.
But that, after all, is your job.
The one that's marked as your changes.
Oh, okay.
That's your job, is to do that.
I noticed that you added as a permissible reason to miss a meeting, travel for work or vacation, something indulged in by you repeatedly.
Yeah. It's one of the benefits of being chairman, I think.
Yeah, rulemaker.
Only if we approve it.
Yeah, I know. Good point. You could be, I might as well sell the camper, you know? Yeah, I just need, I need to see those copies.
I don't have the same one.
See, this one here is.
There you go. There you go. Thank you.
Well, let me just tell you a couple of things, a couple of highlights here, certainly. And my wife had a little bit of input here, too, after operating a division in a hospital with over 200 people. Not that that's the same, but she did seem to know a little bit more about it than I did. And she said there are some laws that you need to follow in these things. I went, okay. You can't just make them up, like, you know, family leave, you know, and you use the language in the national family leave policy and things like that. The one that I want to talk about, a couple of them, ground rules for an orderly meeting. As it stands now, when we wrote this, and Rosemarie, I think you were chair the year we wrote this.
Could be.
We left it to the discretion of the chair to let people talk.
Right.
And I still like to do that. I mean, if we have two people here tonight, I'm going to hear what they have to say. If we have 25 people here, I'm going to put my timer down and say, I'm sorry, you only have three minutes. Everybody kind of, just for an orderly meeting, the rest of it, you know, when people come in here, they should address everything to me. They shouldn't be going after, that bum Smithers up there living in that mansion. You know, they shouldn't be doing that to me.
On the hill.
And it'll, sorry. And it'll be up to me to, as it has in the past, to make sure that that's followed.
Provided you're elected as chair.
Sure.
Wow.
Wait a minute. Hold on. That's actually, that's actually music to my ears. You think the abuse of the attendance policy is bad now? We'll push that right to the edge of the envelope. That's really funny. Yeah. That's really, sorry, guys.
I couldn't resist.
It's amazing. Out of labor, yeah, I think that's really great.
Laid out there.
Yeah. Who's supposed to get in here, Slattery? Well, whether I am or I'm not, I've added the conflicts of interest because we never had a conflicts of interest section. I think that people have to stand down if they have a dog in the fight, so to speak, or.
Horse in the race.
Or a horse in the race, or.
Well, but what kind of a dog? I mean, there's no definition.
It's adverse pecuniary interest, I think.
That's what I think, yes.
Put it in. Put it in. Those are suggestions. I'm not writing the thing. I'm throwing out suggestions. You're the writer. Could you say that again? Adverse pecuniary.
Pecuniary interest.
Wow.
Yeah.
Those were the words that kind of jumped in my mind, too.
It doesn't, it's not a kind of conflict of interest if you lose a vote. It's got to be.
No.
Pecuniary, adverse.
Yeah. You're, you have a big wind developer that wants to put windmills all over your land, and yet we're voting on the energy section that night. I think you should recuse yourself.
So disclose any personal or business interests. Comma, any adverse pecuniary interest?
Sure.
In other words, any adverse, right?
Mm-hmm.
Comma, which may result in actual or perceived conflicts of interest.
Yeah. Perfect.
Why perceived?
Because I think a perception of a conflict of interest is just as.
Oh, okay.
Just as bad.
In the eyes of the public can become a reality very quickly, even though it was never.
What did I say about Caesar's wife? Have to be purer than Caesar's wife.
Because Caesar's wife had to be really pure.
And I read up on that once, because I knew why.
You're making it tough on the secretary.
All right, you've run one meeting, you're in at 100%.
I've run it. Next will become to bury him, not to present.
I don't know. I was at my meeting and.
Oh, you were? It's funny, isn't it, watching it again?
Otherwise, they wouldn't know.
Oh, I refused to watch it.
Oh, you didn't.
I loved it.
All right.
Now, you're scratching out the leave of absence clause completely.
Yeah.
Is that what you're suggesting?
Yeah, and I put it.
I moved it.
You moved it.
I moved it.
Oh, okay.
Where'd I move it to, Craig?
Article two. Article two. Article two.
Article two. There, the following shall constitute grounds for an excused absence.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
And what I think is fair, whoever the chairman might be, Rosemarie, is that to get the secretary off the hook, I think you should email or call the chair as quickly as you know you're not going to make it.
Yeah.
And if it's like one minute of six and you have an emergency, just shoot out an email. That's all. I don't, you know, I don't know how tough we're going to be on attendance policy. We certainly want everybody to show up. I used to be in a rotary club that if you missed three in a row, you were gone. You know, I mean, you're just, there are no excuses.
I just have a question on the language.
Which section?
It appears on attendance policy.
Yeah.
It appears on the old amended version as well, same way. The word serious is used in A and C. And they apply it to illness or injury.
Right. So how would we describe those?
Family emergencies.
It's pretty.
It's kind of.
Well, that's why we're doing it, so.
I twisted my ankle.
Well, serious to me.
I'm pretty traumatized.
Yeah.
Or my wife's really giving me a hard time, or I had a bad day at work.
What can you yell at me?
I had a bad day at work, and I'm going to lose my mind.
And I guess we should do it. I don't, I don't, I don't think this board is ever going to say, Fred twisted his ankle and he thinks it's serious, you know? I don't think that's going to happen, but.
We'll take a vote on it.
We'll take a vote. Do I have a motion on the red table?
We don't have a quorum, though. Because I'm not going to show up. I think the whole thing is we're trying to get.
Yeah, we need a quorum.
That's right.
We need a quorum.
We need a quorum.
And we're not, we don't exist without it. Now that we have nine, five's tough.
So, you know, listen, I'm willing to, I don't change that anyway. That's wording that we had.
Remove the word serious, and it plays just as well without it.
Illness or injury. Yeah.
I agree.
And nobody's going to stay home if they have a cold.
Well, I put some wood in the stove and I've got a chimney fire, you know.
Or somebody forgot to put oil in my tank on a minus 10 night.
Oh, it's serious, but, you know.
And we considered that excuse.
I had, well, because I had, oh, God, oh, God. Heat was off all day, didn't even know.
That was your last one, I remember.
Yeah. I said it was marked excuse.
And we said Ronnie's probably there since he wasn't dead.
That's right. Somebody said it was Ronnie's.
Here, he's probably facing a funeral.
I took Ronnie with me.
That's all right.
Oh, it takes him with you when you go.
It happens when you leave the country.
So we have.
I know his passport.
Article five, I think, that's the one I really want to talk to you guys about because Article five has been around pretty much since I got on this planning commission. And if I recall, I was one of the chief authors of Article five as it stands right now because we had a person on our planning commission who was constantly calling the Secretary of State, constantly calling the state's attorneys, and identifying themselves as a member of the panel planning commission with no, I mean, didn't hesitate for a second until a point where the Secretary of State started calling here, and then they would redirect the calls to me and say, why is the planning commission questioning this, that, and the other thing? And I go, I have no clue what you're talking about. The planning commission has never voted on any of that. He says, then you have a member who is passing themselves off as somebody who, there's a quorum and a successful motion to call up here and identify themselves as, on behalf of the planning commission. So that's when I kind of came up with this one. Rosemarie, you may have been here at that time. I can't remember who was here, but I did that specifically to stop that person from doing that. And when I did, I handcuffed everybody else.
But I think it makes sense that some of these things incur a cost to the town. If you're calling a lawyer about something, that, there's a cost incurred to the town. So it seems to me to make sense that a person would get permission from this group, that the issue would be brought to the group, and then this group would ask a particular person to be the point person on that.
And that was the intention of that.
I think the town's policy is you don't call a lawyer without talking to the select board. We don't.
Right.
On our own.
Right. Call town council. Well, and that's why it's specific where it says Vermont agency.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, speaking with agencies. So the V L T C or other agency, and that means Vermont agency.
So a person from the planning commission should not call on their own and identify themselves as a planning commission member.
Right.
Correct. But you can call as a citizen.
As a citizen.
Absolutely.
Do whatever you want.
Yeah, there's no bearing on that.
They do have good information.
Yeah, they do.
But, or writing letters to the editor. This was a person that was writing letters to the editor and put town planner.
Town, yeah, town planner.
And that was, you know.
Privacies.
Yeah. Absolutely. And she was, this person was entitled to that, to be able to do that, just not sign it as a planning commission member.
Right.
So then you probably want to know, because you think I'm trying to like, you know, centralize and gain all the power here, as to why I think it's okay for me to be able to do what I'm telling the rest of you you can't do.
You or whoever.
Whoever takes his place. I'm sure he's losing ground tonight.
Or whoever.
Beautifully taken.
Wait a minute. If I'm not chairperson, forget about those changes.
Losing votes.
There have been times in the past where I've broken this rule. And there have been times in the past where our former secretary has broken this rule. And they were times when we had to find out about canceling public hearings because of inclement weather. We didn't know the rules. We didn't know when we could reschedule. There was nothing in our guidance, in our packets, that said that. We had to, we had to be able to do that and move quickly. I couldn't convene an emergency meeting because you still have to warn the public as best you can. You still have to have it in a public place to be able to get an answer to that. So I said, well, it should be one of the benefits of the chair, as long as whoever the chair is doesn't abuse that privilege.
Right.
That was my intention of doing it.
So how are you tracking your, so what is your transparency line?
I have to come back. I have to come back to the board and say, here's what I had to do. So I think if you look back, just, I'm not skipping around here. This ties back, you know, you look back at our reorganization. We were only obligated to have a chairperson and a clerk. We have actually a paid-for clerk. So I went through, I started looking at a lot of the, a lot of the planning commissions in the area and around the state. And they almost always have a vice chair, as we have now. Fred's vice chair. You used to be vice chair. And I think I'm going to change that in the next, next time I post the agenda, or Jessica posts the agenda, is to, let's nominate a chair, a vice chair. We have a paid clerk.
But we have to appoint her each meeting, each year. That has been.
Do we?
That has been the practice. When Julie was clerk.
We appoint her as clerk. As clerk. Okay.
What you're saying is the chair would be the key person to, is authorized.
Correct.
To go to the state and get additional information.
That's right.
But in, but that person could delegate that to the vice chair.
Or to get clarification on, you know, on matters, membership matters, terms.
Could we specify that?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, that's what I mean. That's why. This is just a brief, just boom. Make all, you know, for the next meeting, make all the notes you want. Let's specify this, specify that, write this wording, do this. Have a whole new paragraph. I mean, that's fine. These are just thoughts that I started last year and then expounded upon a little bit more this year.
And then you went on vacation.
When I was, I work when I'm on vacation. It's like I know you were over in Australia.
Oh, yeah.
You were on it.
Yeah, right.
But I wanted everybody to understand, you know, why I put that in there. It wasn't to, you know, we have five people calling up and saying, and I don't mind, by the way, if somebody comes to the board and say, hey, Mike, I'd like to call the V L T C and get clarification on that. And we'll just say, fine, you know? I mean, let's, let's put it to a vote. V L T C and get clarification on that, and we'll just say, fine, you know, I mean, let's, let's put it to a vote, and boom, you're off and running, so. But then, that person too, has to come back and.
With the findings.
Yeah, exactly. So, we don't have to vote on that, I just wanted everybody to kinda get a flavor for what I was thinking about.
I would, I would just say, if, if the wording stays, just a gr- a grammar thing, uh, on the one, two, three, the fourth line, determine, I think she'd have an ass of it.
Okay. For school teachers, find all that stuff.
But, I was math, you know, don't hold me to the grammar stuff.
You have the training.
Can hold me.
And I have a question or a suggestion, and I, um, that where we post things now, um, it, it's not, I don't wanna open up a can of worms, but, uh, I was thinking, the Discover Pownell page, the business network now has a community calendar, and it is probably the most comprehensive community calendar, cause it includes official stuff and nonofficial stuff. And if that would also be a good place to post this, since it's not just official places, it's, it's the banner, it's at stores, et cetera.
Sure, yeah.
To include that in, in where these are posted, because a lot of people do things electronically.
See, I should say, uh, under number five, current posting sites, and then open it to discussion because.
Doing it in here, cause it's listed places, is why I was saying.
Well, and why don't you just, in our organization, reorganizational meeting, why don't you just make that, uh, motion?
Okay.
Yeah. I have no problem with it at all. If a lot of people read it, the more people that know about this, you know, it's gonna be critical that the more people that know about these meetings, as we go through changes in our bylaw, we need public input on this. And the worst thing is to have the public all come in at the end, and they're not caught up, and they're misinterpreting whatever our goals were, um, versus being part of the process, being in the room with us while we're doing this stuff. Um, and I, I have a feeling that'll happen with the bylaws anyway, but, um, so the more outreach we have, the better. I agree. I agree. Okay. Any further discussion on the rules of procedure or anything that we can't vote on tonight? All right. Public comment.
I'd like to suggest, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Use your agendas, that, uh, particularly if you have somebody who does wanna make a public comment. Public comment ought to be the second or third thing, it ought to be up in the front of the agenda, so people don't have.
I just thought, Mr. Wilkinson, we'd really enjoy the first part of this program, but you're right, that's fine with me. I don't know, why, why I did that was.
Move public comment up higher in the agenda.
That would be fine, normally I do, but we had to reorg first. We had to have somebody to recognize the, the member of the public as chairperson.
And we didn't.
Yeah.
We didn't, so I, de facto, I think I'm still.
Should it be put right after we approve the agenda?
Yeah, it's fine with me, I think that's what the select board has been doing. They only make me wait till the very end.
Right. Our approval of minutes.
It's only until April.
That's right.
Sorry.
No, that's all right.
Permission to be recognized?
No, yeah.
Barbara said, uh, instead do it after the approval of the minutes.
Yeah, it's fine.
Doesn't matter to me where it is.
What do you think, good idea, huh, to put, to put that, uh, so that people don't have, you know. And the order, there's nothing in state statute that says this has to be in any order, we can put bullet points instead of numbers, and the chair can change the order any way he or she wants. I've asked the select board to do that, to move stuff up.
But I think what Sid is suggesting is our protocol is.
Right, it is.
The public comments come early.
Yeah, I agree, I think they usually do, don't they?
Sometimes, I don't know.
Speaking of which, do we have any public comment, Mr. Wilkinson?
No, I'm just, I'm just here to listen to.
Oh, okay, good, all right. Um, feel free, Brian, any, any observations?
Can I comment on?
Sure you can.
Couple of recommendations.
Any business.
Excuses for absence, uh, maybe you should have something for emergency services, if you ever have a member of the police or fire department join your board.
Oh, good point.
If they get toned out, or if they're on a call.
Good point.
Or doctors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or Indian chief.
So, lawyers, emergency lawyers.
Or Indian chief.
Yeah, good suggestion.
That was the only thing I thought of at the moment.
That's all right, man, much appreciated. Okay, um, under mail, this will be fairly quick, some of this I think I've already passed around once. Um, this is the Southern Vermont Economy, um, project, and it's, Dear Town Official, I wanted to be sure that the members of your community are aware of an exciting opportunity coming up in our area on March twenty-second. Okay. So, maybe next year, you can get that.
Which month?
Here's the Weekly Legislative Report, um, from the Vermont Leagues of Cities and Towns, I'll pass this around. Know, I know I was supposed to also get everybody online, if you, if everybody just wants to write down the link, I think you can subscribe yourselves, that would be the safer way of being able to get that on a regular basis, rather than waiting for me
Comes in.
To remember to do that.
Comes in with all the stuff from Vermont.
Yeah.
League of Cities and Towns.
Yeah, yeah. There's their news, uh, the Emerald Ash Borers, right on the front cover there, obviously a very big deal.
By the way, Ruth Botso and I have been doing an ad hoc, uh, checking. Survey. Surveys. There's a lot of ash out there, peoples.
Are there any Emerald Borers, yeah?
Yes.
Yes.
Are they found, they found them?
Yeah, they found them.
Yeah.
In Vermont.
Bennington County.
Yeah.
But you haven't seen any in here.
No.
They had the purple bags out there for a while.
So, here's a wastewater system and potable water supply permit, um, landowners Kenneth Skyle, Nicole Forrest, and Brian Forrest, it's, um, I'll let you read all of the lot numbers and everything else, um, it was successfully signed off by Elias Irwin, Assistant Regional Engineer of the Ruffin Office, so they have themselves, uh, a water permit, which is good. So, I'll give everybody a minute just to pass that stuff around.
I have, I get it on my computer.
And, and by the way, so do I, and I, I do read it, and it, it's, some of it is very interesting. I would just go to the link and if you just put down that you're on the planning commission, you're entitled to get that, you're probably entitled to get it even if you're not on the planning commission. One of the things unrelated, one of the things I, I asked the select board to do.
Yeah.
Was to approve our budget with a five hundred dollar add-on this year for continuing education. And as far as I know, it passed, right? Yeah, I guess whatever I submitted.
Did you go to the previous board?
I know, that's right, and I never got word that it didn't pass, so I would assume it passed. So, in the V L T C, lots of seminars around the state, lots of, lots of, um, good stuff about how to run these things, um, and how we can do a better job. I am definitely more than willing to go to and attend some of these, I've attended some in the past, I, I would attend them uh, because so much has changed since I started, but, um, it is a real eye-opener, um, when you, when you go to these. I know Megan went to one.
Yeah, really good, yeah.
Over at Lake, you go all the way to Lake Morrie?
Yeah, that's fun.
Lake Morrie Inn, yeah. Um, so, and oftentimes they're in Rutland, they're not always that far away, I've seen them in Manchester, I've seen them in Bennington. So, the B C R C also puts on a lot of clinics and, and seminars as well, I've attended a lot of those. So, I'm just, I, you know, I know we, we don't all have a lot of time, but I encourage you to, if we could pick one or two during the course of the year that you might be interested in, there's money in the budget to, to go to that, okay? Okay. So, under, um, new business, I don't know why, an update is new business, I guess it's new business cause it, as it hasn't happened yet. I believe, we can ask Mr. Harris this, I believe on the April fourth or fifth meeting, there's a special meeting of the select board coming up, and part of that agenda will be to decide on, um, a consultant for this planning commission to work with in changing the bylaws. So, that, I guess that's why I put it under new business, cause it hasn't happened yet, as you recall, there was a two-two tie between two consultants the last time, so they went through the whole process again, R F Qs went out, R F Qs are back, it's the same two, and, um, we'll see what the new board does with that. So, we should have, for our April meeting, not only the chance to reorganize, but to welcome our new consultant and to get started on the changing of the bylaws as well. So, that, that's the update there.
Do you know if it's, uh, B C R C, will it be Mike?
No, it'll be Jim Sullivan.
Jim.
Yeah. I was gonna say something like Michael Batchar has sworn he'll never set foot here again, but I.
But you were just.
Just kidding, Michael, I, I, yeah, I did, I held back, didn't I?
Eh, sorta.
Oh, my God. He has a great sense of humor, don't you, Michael? Number ten, old business, the Energy Section Amendment Update. Hooray, there are two, uh, April tenth and April seventeenth, public hearings are, are scheduled. As far as I know, the select board didn't make any changes to Chapter Eight.
Uh, we, we tabled it for April eleventh, I believe, to discuss it further.
That's right, you can't do it until the day after now, you, there's like a cooling off period, you can't, you have those fifteen days.
We, we tabled a lot of stuff to be able to wrap our minds around everything and get all the information.
But the first one will come, you'll have the first public hearing prior to any changes being made.
Correct.
Yeah.
On the tenth.
On the tenth.
And the eleventh, we'll have a meeting, and then there's another public comment on the seventeenth.
It's at the Pownell Center Firehouse, I believe, it's, it's on the town website, but I think it might be six thirty.
I haven't written, no.
There you go, man. So, the.
Public comment, yeah, six thirty.
Okay.
Yep.
And I, I'm go, I'm definitely going to be there, I think we should all be there. Just, uh, so if, if there are technical questions, although that's not really a night, that's a night to answer basic questions, so that's a night to listen to the public, is what that is.
Be prepared to answer questions.
Okay, probably from the select board, yeah. That's all right.
Uh, I don't know if legally we can.
Yeah, sure I can.
As a private citizen, yes.
Okay. All right.
Which firehouse?
This one.
Down in Center.
Pownell Valley, Center Station.
Where we vote, where we vote.
Yeah.
What room is that, is it where they, where the old folks were, with the snacks?
No, I think it's where we vote.
The room where they set up the.
Yeah.
Highly confidential voting booth.
Yeah, I, now, you guys all recall for our public reading, um, we had one person show up and didn't ask any questions, that doesn't mean that, you know, this one's, uh, been, so now it's been advertised that much longer, and people may be reading it and have questions, so. I don't anticipate a lot of questions, and I'm, I don't know, I think everybody pretty much got what they wanted, we were all pretty much in agreement on that.
April tenth, seventeenth.
Yes, six thirty, six thirty.
Both at the firehouse?
Yeah. And, and our next meeting, what's the third Tuesday, anybody have a calendar, the third Tuesday of, uh?
Which?
April.
April.
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth.
So, ours is the sixteenth.
And then it's next night is the.
And it's six thirty?
Day before the second public hearing.
Yeah, that's right.
Would you recommend that people who are interested in the Energy Committee attend these meetings, or does it?
Well, definitely attend our next meeting, because, um, Barbara and I spoke today, uh, about it, um, and help me with her name again.
Madison Kramer.
Um, who is with the B C R C, who has been instrumental in putting together energy committees.
She's a mayor core this year at B C R C.
Okay.
Task with organizing, or helping to organize energy committees for the towns.
She should also prob, she more than happy to, to put her on the agenda for the next time, we should, she should also go before the, uh, the select board as well, I think, because that has been on their agenda, I believe, I think, did Michael have that on the last agenda, an energy coordinator?
I apologize, I missed the first part of the, part of this.
Energy, did we have energy coordinator on the last, I can't remember on the last select board, I can't remember. Does that ring a bell? If not, it'll be on.
I've had emails in regards to, but I don't have, I don't know if it was brought up at.
Okay. Well, it was recommended, I recommended, you know, based on the town plan, I sat with Michael Walker, went through that and said, it's time to move on this thing, you know, that, uh.
There's a lot of things that are gonna be on our next series of, of meetings, April's booked pretty solid, so.
That's why you have two meetings.
We're kinda taking, um, there's gonna be special ones too.
Yeah.
So, we're gonna be taking our chunks and working our way down through the list, so.
That's the way.
Some things are, might get pushed out all the way into May before we get them addressed.
Yeah. So, you know, there are two approaches to this energy, um, oh, so the Energy Section Update, we just gave you that, um, that update, the Energy Coordinator Update, um, I say coordinator, it could just be an energy committee, that's gonna be literally up to the select board to determine, um, the formation of that, what it's gonna look like ultimately, but there aren't a lot of volunteers, it could be one person.
No. We have two whole people at this point.
It'll be Barbara and the.
No, you've got two.
Permission to speak.
I know you have to. You do, yeah, go ahead, Brian.
May I address the camera on this?
Yeah, please.
So, hi, Brian Harris, I'm chairman of the select board, so if anybody's interested in joining any of these commissions, submit a letter of interest to the town and Pownell, we need all the volunteers we can get, the more people involved, the better the town will be. Thank you.
Good deal.
True dat.
Absolutely right. All right, so I have nothing else, anybody else have anything they wanna talk about?
Just based on, I've watched the, the select board meeting, Brian's, Brian's first, um, there was.
Everybody gotta keep saying that.
It was good, it was good.
It was a good meeting.
Did a good job, Brian.
Yeah.
The, a, a comment was made about shifting from here to over to the school for meetings, and so, and, um, I'm thinking.
We should think about that ourselves, huh?
And I just think, I think the, it's more, it's a more formal layout, and I think it's more conducive to, to a nice organized.
Where, Fred, I, I.
Over to the, over to the.
To the library.
The library.
In the, in the public school.
It's so warm in there.
Well, you know, that's the problem in the wintertime, it literally, they cannot turn the heat down, I don't know what it is, unless, little kids must get really cold or something.
My personal interest in that too, too, is that the more we use that school, the harder it's gonna be to lose that school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Brian has a comment.
Um, yeah, thank you, I'm Brian Harris again, uh, in regards to using the school, I was informed, uh, by Linda that legally, we're not allowed to leave the building with our warrants, so it's gonna be a lot more difficult for the select board to hold meetings over there, I don't know if the same type of rules apply.
Yeah, we don't have any of that. We don't handle any of that.
That's gonna be one of the things that hamstrings us as far as trying to, we can hold like special meetings as long as we're not signing warrants, so we're looking into the legalities of those, but.
There has to be a way around that.
That's what we're, we're looking at.
We need a new town hall.
We did get permission from the school, Mr. Phillips was more than willing to let us use the library or the gym, so that was completely open, we just have to make sure we schedule it, and I'm sure he would do the same for you guys as well.
The only other.
I just wanted to point that out.
The only other problem you have is that inclement weather, they didn't, for, for a public hearing, they'll, they'll open, but for just a traditional meeting, if it snowed that day, they're gone, you're not gonna get in the building.
Yeah, that was made clear to us, that if they're closed for inclement weather.
That's right.
They're, it's off the table.
That's why when we had our public hearings, I scheduled back-to-back nights, and just put in our notice if inclement weather and school closed, next night, same time, um, because that was one of the times Julie and I called the V L T C, was we did have an inclement weather thing, we did have a public hearing, and we didn't know what to do about it, we didn't know how quickly we could schedule the next one, we found out we could schedule it the next night, and we did, at the library, um, and we had to change the place and everything else, but we didn't think we could do any of that, so the V L T C helped tremendously.
So, uh, one of the other ideas that was suggested, I'm sorry if I'm.
Please, we're, we're short, you know, we're, we're out of here in ten minutes.
I'm gonna break our record and make you guys go till midnight.
Yeah, all right.
No, the ambulance hall down there, they have a good-sized meeting room, and we hold our Pownell East baseball meetings there, and they have a good-sized room there.
The rescue squad.
Yeah, the rescue squad, so that might be another option, if they're willing to host it. So, just throwing it out there, that's something that I, I had asked Mr. Walker to look into as well for us.
We, um.
As possible other locations.
We'd have it at the Legion, but, you know, there's alcohol there, just doesn't usually end well, so.
Might I just say?
Yes.
I, I, this has been teasing me, so I went and looked, and the energy goals, uh, I think this is, um, not the final copy.
It's the amended copy, though.
Um, that, uh, we will hire a local energy coordinator, which was, which could be a position shared with another town to implement conservation programs, number two, develop a town energy committee headed by the energy coordinator, so.
The coordinator should come first.
No, but nobody is talking about hiring someone at this point, we're talking about following.
Well, I'll give you an update.
We're talking about volunteering.
Right, and I'll give you an update there, at the last select board meeting, when, so I did bring this up, by the way, or Michael Walker did have it on the agenda, because it was recommended by the select board that they changed that from, uh, hire a person to appoint a person. So, you know, and that would force the, we'd have to then probably amend the plan, I don't, I don't know, just to, to change one word in Section Eight, we'd have to go through that again, I don't think so, I think we could just appoint somebody.
I just wanna be clear. Transpirit.
The way I said it that night was, we'll hire somebody and their pay will be zero.